March 2nd, 2020. Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all. School Committee Chair report, nothing to report at this time, Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time, school buildings, nothing at this time.
Policy Committee.
Haven't met since last Monday, sir.
Okay. Student Support Committee.
We met last week. We talked about an extensive number of topics, mostly curriculum. So it was a really pretty deep and all encompassing conversation and talked a little bit about enrollment and, boy, the depth of what we're doing, where we are with curriculum in terms of the parallels between every elementary school. I mean, Mr. Stevens probably remembers, but our elementary schools were doing kind of different things 12 years ago. And now, if you're a child and you're at South Street and then you might have to change schools, you will go to Crocker or Rhinegold or McKay and you will find the exact same curriculum. This is huge. So I'm really glad to be on the Subcommittee. Jeanne LaBelle Pierce is our Chair and we'll meet again next month. So you guys will have minutes soon.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, Moving On, School Personnel Committee. I don't have a Executive Committee. Nothing as well. And now, the high point of the evening. Student Reps, Kayden Scarpalotti, take it away.
There is not much to report since last week, but upcoming dates for the high school include Wednesday, March 16th, for the annual sports fair at Fitchburg High School. Thursday, March 12th, at 7:20 a.m. in the auditorium, we will hold our Student Advisory Council meeting with Mr. Roach. The meetings are open to any student and we will focus this week on numerous topics, including vaping and/or e-cigarettes. Spring sports tryouts and practices begin Monday, March 16th. FHS School Improvement Council meeting and PTO will meet Wednesday, March 18th at 5:45 in the library. Discussions held will be FHS Vision of the Graduate, How to Improve Attendance, Budget Update, and Other Improvement Ideas. We had an amazing performance last Thursday. Students at FHS could watch African-American history throughout the years through the lens of music. There were nearly 500 students and faculty enjoying the event. Fitchburg High Drama Club offered an amazing performance to the students during last period on Friday. It was their last performance before they competed at Chelmsford High School on Saturday as part of a statewide drama festival competition. FHS sent several students to Rhinegold Elementary today to read to the elementary students as part of the Read Across America Initiative. And then, previous discussions at Student Advisory Council meetings have included overall bathroom cleanliness, brought to Mr. Roach's attention by several students. And I have already noticed improvement as new sink spouts have been installed and positive change continues to take place every day.
Questions?
I missed the first one. You said FHS.
Yes, Wednesday, March 16th, for the annual sports fair.
What sports fair?
The sports fair, yeah. There's going to be, all the varsity sports are going to have a table for kids who are in elementary school and middle school that come up.
16th?
Yes.
What time is that?
Five to seven.
Any other questions?
Did you see the wonderful article on...
Oh, yes.
...Forman School Committee?
Yeah.
Remember this morning?
Mr., what's his name, the former?
Chandler? Ethan Chandler?
Ethan.
Ethan.
Yes.
Yes. That was great, the column in the paper today. Yep. That's terrific. He's an impressive young man. All right. Seeing no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approve the minutes of the Previous School Committee of February 24th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, there's none. Thank you. Executive Session, no need, I don't believe. Is that correct? Mr. Superintendent, Communications?
Just a reminder for everybody who didn't participate in early voting last week. Polls open tomorrow at 7 o'clock in the morning until 8 o'clock in the evening. And if you did vote last week and your candidate is no longer in the race, I'm sorry to say that you're unable to come back and get a new ballot. So, but anyway, I hope there's a big turnout tomorrow and hope to see you at Ward 6 if that's where you vote, because that's where I'll be.
Right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Public comment, five-minute limit. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come to the center table, state your name and your address.
Hi, Ms. Mayor, I had a communication.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
A real quick. So Stratton Players, we are doing Charlotte's Web, June 19th. Our tryouts are Saturday, March 21st, from 1 to 5, and then we'll do callbacks on Tuesday, March 24th. So our next School Committee meeting being on March 30th, I wanted to make sure that this got out there. Stratton Players, Charlotte's Web, the E.B. White classic. Tryouts are Saturday, March 21st, and we're still taking, we're taking lots and lots of posters from kids for the Dog License Poster Contest. This is our third year for the poster contest. It is open to grades 1st through 6th, and kids can draw the theme, Love Your Dog, License Your Dog. We distributed 3,000 flyers, so hopefully, we've got kids at home who are watching this who pick out their markers right now and start drawing. The Therapause will be at the library this coming Saturday, March 7th. This is our fifth year of doing Therapause at the library for Saturday. We average Joe, like a couple of dozen kids and, you know, grownups coming. So if you want to read to Mr. Waffles, if you want to read to Brady Buddy, if you want to read to some dogs, come on by to Fitchburg Library, that is 10:30 to noon. And it is also, the same time as my wonderful Uncle George Mariganian of Watch Uz at Chess Club, does a free chess program for kids. So he is a nationally ranked expert chess player. He welcomes young people. He is happy to teach chess, and it's every first Saturday. So you can visit with the pets and then you can go and learn chess and really work out your mind. I think that is it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Public comment period, five-minute limit. Please come to the center table if you wish to make a public statement, your name and address. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Address is 21 Gale Street, Fitchburg. I sent out a meeting that got passed around against everybody about requests to have Google Chrome Book and Google App privacy discussion amongst the full committee. The reason I wanted that was because I was at a meeting with Principal Pierce and Eileen Spivey. Is that how you say her last name?
Penny Cummins.
Thank you. About the Google Chrome Books that they're bringing into 5th grade classroom, my daughters are in 5th grade. So the big concern is privacy, of course, and I want to know exactly what steps are being taken to protect their privacy. Emails have been, according to agreement, are not confidential, and as far as I understand the word confidential, that means legally required to keep private or not released to the public, let's put it that way. So administration could pass it internally, but they can't pass it through email. I mean, I guess there's a lot of regulations on that. I'm not quite certain what all those mean, but they're not confidential, emails are not confidential. Does that mean that it's publicly accessible? Could I do a Freedom of Information Act request and see students' emails? I mean, if they're emailing, for instance, to somebody like the Chair of the School Committee, that's public email. But could I see the student's side of it, or do I have to look at it from the Chair's side from a Freedom of Information Act request? So these questions are a little bit unanswered, and there's a lot of confusion, I think, between the different parts, too. The Google Chrome Book agreement that I was told that I need to sign in order for them to get one, one-to-one Chrome Book, I guess it doesn't leave the school, is my understanding. But each Chrome Book is assigned to each student. But the agreement said that they're property of the city of Fitchburg, therefore have no expectation of the right to privacy, which is troubling, because what do you consider your property? Is it the application, the use of the application on the Chrome Book? Does it mean the data, the bits and bytes, so you can examine every bit and byte that's on the Chrome Book at your leisure? You can't do that with a student's locker. You can need reasonable suspicion. Even if you, even if there is, if there's reasonable suspicion, I mean, it has to be articulable. So you can't just like say, let's go check and see that Neil's daughters are not sending bomb threats to people. Let's just go check. We don't know, we can do it though, because we have the means. And I want to point out that the means seems to be give you, or someone in the administration the right. There's some language in the Acceptable Use Policy, I think it's point number 13, that says that administration can review emails or communications as they wish, basically, as they see fit. It doesn't reference anything along the lines of reasonable suspicion, which would be a legal requirement for doing that, in my mind. If you're giving up the right to privacy, there's another question, too. Does that, is that a trade-off between the tool, the Chrome Book, and the apps, the Google Apps too especially, and education? Because you're not supposed to require relinquishing rights in order to have the benefit. That's part of the privacy laws of Massachusetts, from my understanding. So these aren't policy questions, and it was moved to a Policy Subcommittee, Subcommittee from my understanding, from Superintendent Jokla and Mayor De Natale. That was my understanding, you two had a discussion about this and that was the conclusion. I don't think that this is a policy discussion at this point. In the future, I definitely think that the scattershot of policies has to be cleared up. But I think that one of the things that needs to be, I don't, given to the public, is a hearing or a comment period where not just a School Committee, but actually you make a real effort to go out and inform everyone who is, as a child at the schools, what exactly they're giving up with their rights. The form that I was sent from Eileen about the agreement to email is you agree to email or you don't. Basically, you agree to a Google account or you don't. And that agreement, that's as simple as that. It doesn't say, it doesn't spell any of the conditions that you're giving up, doesn't say when Google will or won't release your information and so on and so forth. It's basically like, do you want an email account or not? It doesn't imply any concern about rights. So I think this needs to be much more of a public discussion, and I would like it to be something held at School Committee and taken seriously. As far as going to the policy, I don't think that's not taken seriously if it goes to Committee or Subcommittee. The problem is, though, that it's focusing on policy, not on the intent of the School Committee and of Fitchburg Public Schools to protect the privacy of students.
You've exceeded your five minutes, Mr. Delpheld.
Okay. Can I finish up?
So you want to close it up, please. Thank you.
The one, the grounding behind all of this is that I think that education has to be personal and private for every student. If there's a reason for going to account, that's, well, I mean, I would like that spelled out, but other than that, everything should kind of disappear when you're 18, unless you kind of hit reset when you become an adult. So if we can have a little more broad discussion about where and when we can have this longer discussion rather than a five-minute one that obviously isn't enough, then I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, great. First, we'll start off with the trip to Walt Disney World for the band, and Tabitha Greenlee is here, so Tabitha, if you can come on up to the table.
Hello.
Hi.
So I'm here to seek final approval for the band to perform at Walt Disney World over April vacation.
I don't know, we're going to have to think about that.
We may have to go with the executive.
Right. I was going to say, if you have any questions about what I submitted, then please ask, otherwise.
Can you just give like a brief overview for people who maybe aren't familiar with the value of what this is?
Yeah, I can do that, yep. So five years ago, the band traveled to Disney World to participate in Festival Disney, and it was the first time that we'd gone in 20 years, over 20 years. And at that time, the last time that the band had gone was in 1986 or 87, I believe. So I think we should get back to a rotation where we go every three to four years, so that every student who comes to Fitchburg High School as a member of the band would be able to go on a very large trip to participate in a music festival at a place like Walt Disney World for the betterment of their musical education. So when we go to perform there, we are marching down Main Street, USA, in the Magic Kingdom. That's part of our performance. We will also have a three-hour clinic with Walt Disney kind of certified music educators who will spend time talking about what the band is doing really well and things that they think that we can improve on our performance. So those kind of musical opportunities for us to hear and be adjudicated by other music educators is one of the most valuable pieces of their education. And as I said multiple times, anytime that I ask for us to be able to go and travel someplace, you know, bands of excellence travel because they are able to do so, they're able to be heard by other schools, other people kind of on the planet, and we're going to represent ourselves well for our city, for our community at large, and for our school and our band. And we've made fabulous strides over the last six, eight years, moving towards a much higher caliber of performance and a higher level of consistency every time that we go for performances, whether that's our achievement in festival or competition and the scores that we receive at various competitions throughout the state and elsewhere.
How many students?
Thirty-eight students are going.
How many?
Thirty-eight.
And how are they paying for that?
This is 30 on your...
The letter that I submitted to Patty this week says the updated number is of 38 students. Yeah. That includes every single kid from the high school.
I was wondering, because I know you've had that many in the band and the kids not want to go.
No, it's not that. If you, there are very specific reasons that only three students are not attending, which I don't necessarily want to discuss publicly, but I'd be willing to in a different setting. But there are 38 students who are attending.
Any 8th graders?
Yes. So the way that we're, that they are paying for it is we did a fundraiser at the beginning of the year, and we sold pies, and kids sold a lot of pies. We, like, 250 pies that we sold, and that helped to defray the cost immensely, but we also do large fundraisers as an ensemble, so things like running the concession stand at every home football game, our wrapping booth in the winter, and also, we broke up the payments kind of from September until now. The band parents are contributing $200 per kid for every single student to be able to go, and we're probably paying in excess of eight students, kind of almost a full boat, in order to ensure that every single student that wanted to attend is able to do so. So finances, those three, the financial...
Those three have nothing to do with money, right?
It has nothing to do with money, yes.
All right, good. Okay. Yep. Great. Have fun.
Thank you.
When?
We depart April 23rd and come back April 27th.
Great. Questions? Yes?
I think, last time I heard you talking here, you were waiting on new band, new outfits?
Yes.
Did they come and did they fit?
Well, we have, we have, it's a long process to go through the design and creation of a new uniform, and we've submitted our deposit for our uniforms, and it can be a six-month waiting period. So the last time that I heard, we were very, very hopeful that we would have them in time to travel to Walt Disney World, and that would be kind of the premiering of our new uniforms, but it looks like it will be, they will be available on June 1st. That's our, kind of, the timeframe that they've been giving us. There's a possibility that they could be done earlier, but it's unlikely.
Would it help if the mayor called the manufacturer?
I wish...
Stuck the words right out of my mouth. Who could I call?
I wish that there was, but it's because we ordered from one of the most reputable companies and with an extraordinary track service, track record of the kinds of uniforms that they create and the quality with which they create, and so because they supply the uniforms for many of the drum corps over the summer and collegiate bands, you know, Stanbury Uniforms is kind of the standard bearer of marching band uniforms. So because we've gone to that company as opposed to a different one, that's the reason that the delay.
Big demand.
Yeah, they're very, very much in demand. I mean, I started the process with them in the summer, so we go through the process of telling them what we want for our design, then they send us a sample, then we sent the sample back, because I wanted some changes, then they sent us a new sample and all of that good stuff.
And then, I'm sure the mayor would probably call to check, but I hope.
Thank you, Mayor De Natale.
Then also, also, I know that you've been actively wanting the younger grades to join in.
Yes.
And it's been successful.
Yeah, so last year, we established a VIP program. I was hopeful to be able to do it again this year, and I'm still kind of waiting on final approval to know that that's a thing that we can still do.
But what I'm getting at is, will the ones that joined be able to attend?
Uh, yes.
Or is there an age problem?
No, so the, we have, out of those 38 kids, 30 are FHS students and the remaining eight are in 7th or 8th grade.
Nice.
And all of those students participated in our VIP program last year, and those students in middle school all marched with us in the fall during our competitive season. And that was one of the hopes and the expectations of being able to do the VIP program, was to give them an early opportunity to see what it's like to be in the high school band, and because they'd already made connections with students and, you know, kind of mentoring opportunities with older students, that they would feel completely comfortable and willing to come already during the marching band season, which is great, because a kid could start in 7th grade and they could be marching with us for six years.
What are you waiting, when you said approved? I know when we met, are you waiting for the Superintendent to approve it?
It was kind of like, we can do this, but because I asked for a financial contribution, then it was said that I needed to go to School Committee to know if we'd be able to pay for that, so...
Before I make the motion to approve this, I just want to share, I want to share a story with, not just you, but everybody, and I'm going to try and do this so I don't let on who it is. I have a friend whose child is currently in the band, and this child participated in the VIP program. And initially, this student was considering going to Monty Tech, but when the child learned that Monty Tech didn't have a band, the band was something that was of great interest to this student, and that was decision, that was a big part of that student's decision to continue her education at Fitchburg High School. So it's a good story, and it's a good program that you run.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Jokla, is there anything we have to do, was that included in the budget, or where are we?
I didn't mean to dump...
No, no, no. Because...
I think we're okay.
Intentional. All I asked for was to help to support the busing costs, to take the kids to Canterbury Lake, because the band parents are making quite a significant contribution towards our trip to Disney and our uniform purchase, because the grant from the Wallace Foundation doesn't cover the entirety of the cost of our uniforms, which we expected, which is why we've been kind of saving over many, many years. And so I expected that it might cost about $1,700 for us to take two buses to get to the festival in the spring. And also to have the bus to take the kids back from FHS to their respective middle schools, so if that's A-OK, we can hit the ground running, it'll be no problem.
It's fine.
Okay.
We're good, just coordinate through Donna.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do.
I just have a, may I be recognized? Okay. I have another question triggered by what you just said. How do these uniforms work, because kids come in different sizes?
Right, so we work with a representative from Stanbury, and they came in October, I believe, and they measured every single student that we currently have in the band. And what we, what they do is they look at kind of the average sizes of what our band looks like now and what our previous uniforms look like in terms of the spread of sizes. And so you have, based on their expertise, they recommend how many you should purchase in each individual size, with the expectation that the kids that they measure are going to stay for four years and that they're probably going to be comparable in size to any other kid that you have entering into the program. Plus, they can be modified, so it's not the end of the world, like, we can always buy additional uniforms. That's not an issue. We can always kind of put in a supplemental amount once they've been ordered. We're doing a big bulk at first, but we can always order more.
Are we doing like 50?
Pardon?
Are we doing like 50?
We ordered 50 uniforms, yes.
And currently 38.
Yeah, so we're, we're in a place that we might need to order new ones in a year or two if the growth continues this way.
Well, I hope so.
Me, too, me, too.
That's a good, that's a good issue.
It is a very good problem to have, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to move...
You know, Mr. Walsh, if we could, we have two more field trips in here.
Sounds good.
They're all in the, in the action items anyway.
Yeah, we can group, but we can group them.
You won't have a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Continuing on the field trip, for a vote tonight for the first reading, or final reading, is the Nature's Classroom from Memorial. Brittany Lavoy had previously presented on this. No one from Memorial is here tonight to speak about it, but assuming there are no issues, I would recommend School Committee vote to approve. And lastly, we have Becky Leva, representing Memorial for their trip to Pinkham Notch up in the White Mountains.
Okay.
McKay, excuse me.
Yes, I'm here just to seek final approval for our trip to the White Mountains for our AMC Overnight Mountain Classroom Trip. We have about 35 to 40 students going, we're in the, we haven't had the final payment due, so we'll know better next month, but, and, so they're all very excited. We had a parent night the other night. Parents are very excited, so...
Is everyone going that can go?
Anyone that, we're trying to make sure anyone that wants to go can go, so through either through fundraising, we've had some parents who have graciously, if their child sold more candy bars, for example, and has extra money to put it towards other students in need, so we really have had some great parents. $250.
Per student?
$255, yeah, per student. And includes everything, the meals, lodging, bus.
Yeah, good. Okay. Questions? Have fun.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the second and hopefully final reading of the proposed school calendar for next year. The first reading was last Monday. I don't know if there are any comments or questions of the School Committee.
Need a formal vote on that?
It's on the action items, so that can just be added to the list if there are no...
We'll bundle them.
Okay. Fine. Okay. Next up is, tonight we have Amy Jolly, Headmaster of Applewild School, an independent school here in Fitchburg, and tonight she's here to talk about a amendment in the grades that Applewild will be serving, and she needs formal School Committee approval to proceed.
Yes.
So the floor is yours, Amy.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you all for fitting me in this evening, and thank you all for your service to the community. We, at Applewild, I'm the, I'm the new head of school, so I've been there since about this time last year, but one of the things that I understand about this school is that for the first 43 years of our existence, we had a 9th grade program. And we reluctantly let it go a few years ago for a variety of reasons, and ever since that time, we've had a collective institutional sort of sadness about that, especially because the years we work with, we really believed that having a 9th grade option for students who may need one more year before going off to high school is just really important. So we started thinking about ways that we might want to do that, that would work for us institutionally, and our inspiration came from a couple... And our inspiration came from a couple of books. Tony Wagner, a professor at Harvard, wrote a book called Creating Innovators, and he also wrote a book called, um, Global Achievement Gap. And, uh, those two books were actually the inspiration for the program we've developed, which is an interdisciplinary program, uh, for a small cohort that is largely community-based. So students will be leveraging the, um, the resources of our community for some field work. They'll also be doing extensive work, uh, on campus, and our theme is, um, urban renewal and placemaking. And they'll be led by a team of two faculty for thirteen students. We anticipate this to be a transformative year for our students, giving them entrepreneurship, design, leadership, and innovation skills. Uh, we expect about half of the students to come from overseas and about half to be domestic, and, um, we're really excited about it. So excited to bring back a ninth grade program that fits sort of, uh, where school is going these days, you know, for twenty-first century skills and, and also just institutionally with what works for us as a, as a small independent school.
The hope is to begin the ninth grade in the fall of this year.
Mm-huh.
Um, I left her.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Trent.
Um, just, uh, making sure I understand, so, um, you do the ninth and there's no tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and so off they'd go to a tenth grade somewhere, somewhere else.
Well, we, we actually, statistically, for schools that go pre-K through nine, about forty percent of them end up repeating nine. So, um, that's what we expect will happen here as well.
Could you tell me the name of the second book? Your voice dropped and I didn't quite get it.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's called Global Achievement Gap by Tony Wagner.
Global, that's the second book, right?
Mm-huh.
And the first book?
Creating Innovators.
By Tony Wagner?
Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Um, yeah, I'd like to speak in support of this. Um, Applewild has been a, um, really important school in our community, and I'm really glad that Amy Jolly is the new head. Stratton Players, for whom I am the chair, started at Applewild School almost a hundred years ago. We continue our relationship, and I'm really happy that we have this bond. And we do have, you, you have Pittsburgh kids up there, you have this really powerful powerhouse ninth grade program to be developed, um, that I thought, especially with overseas kids coming and having these really formative years here, is very exciting for Pittsburgh. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of how great this is and how exciting, because education has got to innovate. So, um, and I, I understand, I had a collective sadness about the ninth grade, um, going away, 'cause my mom taught at Applewild for thirty-seven years and has a classroom named after her. And, um, it's, um, it's a really, it's a really exciting thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just that, well, has been part of our community for, for many, many years, so anything we can do to-
Thank you, thank you.
Yes? I have another question for you. Did you say you anticipate two groups of thirteen?
Just one group of thirteen.
Led by two faculty?
Mm-huh.
One group of thirteen led by two faculty?
Mm-huh.
And half would be, uh, I'm gonna say six and a half kids from Europe are, are the world?
Mm-huh.
And six and a half from here, okay.
Thank you. Good luck.
Great.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last, um, present, presenters coming for you tonight are Eva Kelly of our enrollment department and Adrian Curiolas.
Kiras.
Kiras, okay. Uh, of the U.S. Census Department. So I'll take away the-
Thanks. Thank you so much for having me here. I hope I try to be brief, uh, because some of you have already seen this presentation in your, I'm not gonna preach to the core, 'cause I know you pretty much know the importance of the census. Um, so we are the largest statistical agency there are, provide quality-
Eva, excuse me, Eva, but could you either speak up a little bit closer to you?
Yes, sure, there you go.
I didn't really get your little introduction there, but, uh-
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Pull it toward her.
Oh, oh, I thought it was doing it. All right. All right. Does that make it better?
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, the Census Bureau is the largest statistical agency there are. We provide quality data about its people and economy. And for now, we are talking about the decennial, which is every ten years we count the population. So the census is easy, is safe, and is important. It brings you representation, it brings you, um, federal funds, and so much that you need for your federal, for, for programs that you are running, especially for schools. Um, one thing is that the census is mandated by the Constitution. We wanna head count everyone living in the United States. The goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So again, determines the number of seats in the House of Representatives. Um, it determines, um, also the federal funds. Six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars is, you know, is allocated, uh, from the count of the population. So if we don't have, um, a, a great count of the population, we will, um, can only fix it in ten years. So it's a lot to take, it's a lot at stake. Uh, again, there are lots of programs that are, um, under, um, the federal fund, and here I have a few, but there are just so many more so relevant to the school. So it's safe because, um, we have the Title XIII. Personal identifiable information is protected by a law, by a federal, by a federal law from the U.S. Code of Law called Title XIII. Title XIII protects, um, uh, your data, and as a census employee, we sworn confidentiality to protect your information for life. Even if we moved to another agency, if we, um, retired, we have to protect our information for life. Um, and the other thing is that, um, there's a lot of fear in the community. So we wanna, you know, trusted leaders to let people know that personal information is protected. We don't share with any other government agencies. We don't share with law enforcement agencies, and we have been challenged in court to get our information. And, um, and this law was always, you know, um, the core of the, the Census Bureau. It's never been broken since nineteen fifty-four. So, and it's easy this year. So twenty twenty is the decennial. Every ten years we count the population, so this time we'll have the census being, uh, done online or over the phone. This is the first time in history. Um, by March twelfth through the twentieth, people will receive a letter, an invitational letter, coming to their, um, mailbox. Um, and they will have a chance to respond online or over the phone. They'll have a unique, um, code to go online and respond. Uh, and even if they lost the letter and if they, you know, forgot the letter and come to the library, you wanna fill out the census, uh, there is a click, it's a button that says non-ID. They will be able also to do it through a prompter questionnaire from the address. So it'd be really easy to do. And a set of nine questions, um, really simple questions, uh, name, date of birth, um, uh, race and ethnicity, if you own or rent your home, really simple questions. And, uh, what relationship do you have if you, that are more than two people living in a household? So the Census Bureau never asks for, uh, the social security number, never asks for bank account, credit card information, and never asks for money or donation, uh, towards a political party. So besides English, we will have twelve non-English languages that'll be available for on, online or over the phone. So the phone lines will be, um, prompted to the language that they choose to, and there'll be no robots call, you know, you don't have to recall, uh, to a robot, or you go straight to the language that you want. And it'll be much easier this way. And also, we have fifty-nine non-English languages to support the language line. So if we don't have the twelve non-English, non-English languages on the, online and over the phone, you can also go to the, our website and look for the guidances and videos that you can go back to the online version or go back to the paper questionnaire and fill out the form. Um, by April eighth, if people choose not to do online or over the phone, the questionnaire, so they can wait until April eighth when they receive the paper questionnaire, there'll be a track here in Pittsburgh that people will have both at the same time, and bilingual. So there'll be a track here in Pittsburgh, they have both at the same time. So again, some of our timeline, March twelfth through the twentieth, to receive the paper, uh, to receive the invitational letter. A few reminder, um, letters that will come along the way if you don't fill out the quest, the, the questionnaire. And by April eighth, that's when the, the paper questionnaire will come to the door, unless this track here in Pittsburgh, they'll have both at the same time in a bilingual way. So we still, um, you know, sharing the message about the jobs, so we need people still to apply for jobs. And, uh, we're not at the top of our capacity, and we ask trusted leaders to please share the message about the jobs. Uh, for Pittsburgh, for the Worcester County, we are paying twenty-two dollars an hour, and we are asking for a minimum of ten hours a week. So please share the message and let your community members know that this is available for them. So some of our timeline is that April first is the census day. It's just, um, a milestone. If a baby is born after April first, for example, it's not counted in the, the decennial. So just, um, it is a really a cutoff, um, date. By mid-May, May thirteenth is the date when we're gonna be deploying census takers. For those who didn't respond to the census, we wanna save taxpayers' money the best that we can, so we are asking for, to share the message, let your community members know, do the best campaign that you can to really do, um, an outreach for people to respond online over the phone or the paper questionnaire. Um, April, uh, December thirty-first is when we will deliver the, the count to the president, and April, um, April first, twenty twenty-one, is when we deliver the counts to the district, to, for redistricting purposes, to the states for redistricting purposes. There is a complete count committee here in Pittsburgh, and it's been, um, really the best practice is to bring trusted leaders together, um, and engage in them in a best campaign to outreach and reach hard-to-count communities. Pittsburgh's one of the hard-to-count communities in our radar, and we really wanna do the best that we can to really bring the message and let community members know, overcoming challenges and barriers, to really, um, get everyone counted. Some of our support, we have a great, robust, um, links in our website for outreach materials, and it's available for the partners. And also, because we are on the school committee, I wanna bring you the information about the statistics in school. This week, we have the Statistics in School. It's a national campaign, and it's gonna, i- it's taking place from today, March second through March sixth, and it's a great campaign nationally. So we have, um, a really great set of materials and activities on our website, all about statistics in school. And this is, uh, downloadable materials to engage for age-appropriate students, and they are great to talk about the census, really on a fun and very interesting way. I wanna show you just a couple of, um, themes for each week that are, um, taking place. So today, for example, kids talked about the, what is the, the twenty twenty census. So for each day, there is a theme and a set of activities and materials that the kids can, um, you know, on a very fun way, and this is materials from teachers to teachers, um, and it's easy to download, and it's kind of a page or so. But the interesting is that on the last day, on March sixth, we have the Shape My Community's Future. And that is a take-home flyer that the kids can take home with a homework for their parents to write it down, something that they think that will be interesting for, uh, for their community and why the census is important. So this is something that it's really interesting to engage the kids, because they will come home and, because they talk at school about the statistics in school, they'll come home and say, "Dad," or "Mom, I really want you to take a look at this. This is so interesting and so important for the country." And it's really engaging them on a civic duty and engaging them in the conversation of the census. Um, so it's really simple, it's a take-home flyer, and it comes with a homework activity. And also, as a census, um, the Census Bureau can provide you with, um, some gifts for, to engage the kids, so I can come with, um, um, a few packages for the kids, some books, and then, uh, we can sort of gather maybe at the auditorium or something like that, that we can talk about for a couple of minutes and give them the, the gifts and send them home on a very fun and engaging way. So this is something that we are proposing in terms of the statistics in school, and it's taking place this week. So if you have any questions, please let me know. And that's all I have to, um, to tell you about the census. Thank you.
We have, my office has been spearheading those meetings, and, and Joan David, my aide, has been, uh, been doing a lot of work on this census. And I, I have to tell the viewing public, the people that are out there, you really, really, please, let yourself be known. No one's tracking you, now all we want to know is that you are living in Pittsburgh. A perfect example of how, where that money goes, community development block grant funding. CDBG is so very important to a city like Pittsburgh because we have so many needs, and this is our opportunity. The more people we can count, the more money we're gonna get. Two hundred and seventy-five billion dollars is gonna be distributed throughout the country.
Six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars, actually.
I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy-five.
It's much more than that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Not a shabby amount, right?
Yeah.
We want our fair share, we want more than our fair share. I want as much as I can get.
Yes, and you-
Right?
Exactly. And, and you can shape your future here in your community.
Yes.
But it has to be a really, um, way that you all come together, because we all in this together. This is how you shape.
It touches every aspect of the community.
Exactly.
Education, the roads, infrastructure, uh, demolition, attacking blight in, in neighborhoods. The, the money, and we, at one time, we wore, and again, I think it was probably because we did a better job at, at the count, there was a time, when I was on the city council in the, the previous census, we were up at one point five million. We're below a million now, and I think it's because of the numbers.
One thing is-
Because we haven't, we haven't shrunk in size. If anything, we've grown or at least stayed the same. So we should be ma-, getting more money than that, but we've gotta do a better job of counting.
Yeah. So, um, we have a great way for you to look at your community. It's the census.gov/rom, R-O-A-M. So this is a great way for you to know a little bit more about your community. And once you click on it, I have a slide here that show, uh, about the ROM. So if you click on it, you will see that your community, sorry about that. What I have here is Pittsburgh, uh, I'm sorry, what I have here is Worcester. But it's Worcester, for example, this track that I'm clicking on it, it's a, a blue-shaded area. If you take a look and do the same for Pittsburgh, and you're gonna see a blue-shaded area in Pittsburgh, you click on it, you see that you are about twenty-five to twenty-nine percent of estimate from twenty seventeen, from the American Community Survey, that tells me that your community are not respond, are not gonna respond to the census.
Right.
So twenty-five percent to twenty-nine percent is a, you know, it's a very huge number for you to take for the next ten years. So then, um, and this, it's a great mapper that tells you, um, about the census, about your community. Uh, the other thing is that you will have access to the live map by March twentieth, um, and then you'll see your community self-responding and how they are doing. So if it is campaign that you have to take pla-, that have to put in place, or a, a very good campaign, certain areas that you think that will attract people, this is the time when we have to lo-, know these locations and, you know, set census takers, sending exactly to those specific spots, um, to count the population, so then you get a better count. But you have access to that, to this live map that'll be available on our website.
Thank you.
So we're also in the enrollment center. You can come in on the Thursday afternoons in April, and we're going to be trained to help our families register for the census. So if anyone'd like to come in between four and six, we'll be there with devices so they can log in and-
Thank you.
Adrienne, we're also, we're also enlisting the faith-based communities-
Those are great ways.
-in the churches and whatnot, that's where the-
This is a great way, yeah.
-active audience, so to speak.
By March twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, we have the Census Worship Week. By March 27th through the 29th, we have the Census Worship Week. It's, again, it will take national, it will take a national campaign. So everybody in the United States will be talking about the census that week. So faith-based leaders, it's a great way for them to engage their communities, to respond to the census. And you can also set up the questionnaire systems if needed.
Just to promote, again, tomorrow at the Public Library, I'm assuming you will be the person speaking. It's 11:00 a.m. at the, in the guidance room of the library, there'll be a more in-depth presentation, opportunity for question and answers for people at home who want to be there in person to ask specific questions. And I will say, one of the slides that you mentioned, that the census data is confidential, and the census has been done since 1790, and I'm a retired librarian, I was a documents librarian, very involved with disseminating the printed results that we would receive. And never has any information been leaked or given out to any other agency in the federal government over that time period from 1790. So it is confidential, no one can track you down. It's very important to participate and to be counted.
Exactly.
Really makes a difference.
Another way is that some residents are afraid if they have, for example, they are supposed to have four people living in a household, but in fact, they are fifteen. So they have fifteen people living there, they are afraid that that landlord might know. So things like that, that it's really so important to let your community members know that it's not shared with anyone. Nobody will know that it is fifteen or four people living, it doesn't matter, but you have to count everyone.
I would venture to say if the landlord thought you had four and you had fifteen, he's not paying attention. How do you hide fifteen? Anyway, thank you.
All our students are also getting a flyer to take home this week, Statistics in School. So everyone's going to have one sent home with them.
Actually, I have a question. I just thought of this, which, I guess it wasn't until this year I realized that we have students who live in group homes. How will they be contacted to be counted? As of April 1st, if they're living in Fitchburg in a group home, they should be counted for Fitchburg.
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. So group homes is a special operation. This comes from our field division operation. It works in a way that we already contact some group homes to let them know, or ask, actually, ask them how they want us to count. They want a specific date, we can set up this, like an appointment. So we go there and count them. So it's, you know, it's a way of the field operation office contacting those group homes, but they already have these addresses. And the homeless count, actually, will be done from March 30th, 31st, and April 1st. And we have already some census out, going to some soup kitchens and some shelters to schedule when they want to have this count. Do you want to schedule on the 30th, do you want to meet you go on the 31st? How do you want this done? So things like that, it's already being done.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Actually, I think we have one donation.
We have one donation tonight from the Crocker PTO, the estimate of $5,000 to purchase four filtered hydration stations for the school. We've been working with Mr. Borack and the PTO, and we have a target date of roughly April for us to have them installed at the building.
They're doing pretty well, huh? Five thousand for the, wow. Good for them. Great. Action items?
Action item time.
Motion to bundle 20-1278 up through and including 20-1283.
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to bundle 20-1278, 20-1283. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve the bundle. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed is unanimous. Motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.